Good evening, I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg Jamestown County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg Jamestown County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motions convening the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Theresa.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Theresa, would you take the poll please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Moving on to item 3.2, approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, thank you. I would like to move approval of the agenda with the following modification. I would like to recommend flipping items 4.01 and 4.02 to allow recognitions of students or staff to go first.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
I used to that first.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
So now moving on to item 4.2, recognition of students and/or staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to recognize the accomplishment of several students tonight before they begin summer break. We begin by recognizing several students who will attend summer residential governor schools. This program provides high school juniors and seniors with intensive educational experiences. Students spend four weeks of their summer on a college or university campus, and during this time they're involved in classroom and laboratory work, field studies, research, individual and group projects and performances, and seminars with noted scholars and visiting artists. Students, as your name is called, please come forward to be recognized and remain for a group photograph. From Jamestown, Barnu Karendish and Leo Murphy were both accepted to the French Academy. Benjamin Sheriff was accepted to the Spanish Academy. Alison Barham and Sophie Thacker-Gaultney were accepted to the Humanities Academy. Benjamin Helbert, Lily Molnar, Patricia Shostak, and Amy Walls were all accepted to the Visual Performing Arts Academy. And Lauren Montgomery was accepted to the Agricultural Academy. From Lafayette High School, Bryce William Beach and Angelica Wood are attending the Spanish Academy. Elizabeth Chason attends the Latin Academy. In addition, Maya Reese is off to the Agricultural Academy. James Tisk, Humanities. And Kayla Ward, the Visual Performing Arts Academy. From Warhill High School, Kieran Anderson will attend the Visual Performing Arts Academy. While Annika Myers attends the Humanities Academy. Students, we wish you all the best in your summer learning adventures, and I believe we're about to have a photograph taken.
I'm getting out of the way.
It's your favorite. You're like showing the-
Yes, squeeze in just a little bit so you're not in front of the projector. Perfect.
Thank you.
Under the table.
Under the table.
If we'll send you all the photo.
We're also pleased this evening to recognize thirteen seniors who have earned the WJCC Honors Seal. Students graduating with this distinction take a demanding curriculum which includes a minimum of five advanced placement courses in three different content areas, and a four-course sequence in one global language. The students also design and complete a community service project and a research-based honors project. Jamestown seniors are unable to attend tonight because this meeting conflicts with the school's senior awards night. Please hold your applause as we announce these students' names, and then we'll celebrate the students who were able to join us this evening. From Jamestown High School, David Bass, Erica Benyuki, Isaac Cridle, Justin Ekstrom, Megan Gillespie, Oliver Herzig, May Lang, Kalen Punzelen, Lilly Roberts, Anya Simmons, and Connor Solczrowski. With us this evening are students from Lafayette and Warhill. Students, please join us up front as your name is called. From Lafayette High School, we have Kate McDade. And from Warhill High School, please congratulate Madeleine Howar. This is truly an outstanding accomplishment well done to all of the honor seal recipients this evening. Concludes this evening's recognations.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Okay, moving on to item 4.1, announcements and superintendent's report. Doctor here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In closed session this evening, the school board was briefed on safety and security measures in place throughout the division, as well as the work that our school's safety committee is doing to research best practices being used in other schools and divisions. That briefing happened in closed session because it is not prudent to share detailed security plans publicly. The more widespread the information is, the less effective the plan becomes. That being said, I do think it's important to remind our families, staff, and community of some of the general safety measures in place throughout WJCC schools. For example, all WJC schools have secured cameras throughout the building. Local law enforcement agencies can access these cameras remotely, and if needed, they can see what's happening in our schools even before officers arrive at the scene. Each middle and high school has a school resource officer who is a sworn law enforcement officer assigned to each of the buildings. High schools also have division staff who serve as security officers. And we're in the process of hiring two additional security officers for our middle schools. These school's security officers take part in training offered by the Department of Criminal Justice every other year. As part of the school's safety protocol, crisis plans are reviewed and updated as needed every summer, and our staff receives training in responding to a variety of emergencies. We practice emergency procedures through drills with students and staff four times a year at each building. In the event of an actual emergency, each school has multiple stop-the-bleed kits that were provided by the Fire Marshal's Office through a grant. These kits provide materials intended to stop traumatic bleeding and can be used in the event of any situation. There's also a threat assessment protocol that is reviewed annually with appropriate staff such as counselors, teachers, security personnel, and school administrators. In addition, every school has a buzzer system for visitors and card key access for all staff members. The Division continues to redesign and renovate front entrances at schools to better manage the flow of traffic in and out of the building, again as a security measure. And as an added layer of security, the School Division implemented the division-wide use of computer-based visitor signing system that checks visitor IDs against sex offender databases nationwide. While technology enhances our ability to provide a more secure learning environment for students, it is the relationships between students and staff that are key to maintaining a safe school. It is vital that students feel comfortable talking with counselors, teachers, and other trusted adults when they are struggling in school. And, as we have seen most recently, is equally critical for students to know where and how they should report a concern when they become aware of a potential safety issue related to their school. People are the key to our security. See something? Say something. That is critical for the police and school administrators to be able to respond quickly and take appropriate action. As I shared in an email to families this weekend, we cannot and will not become complacent in our efforts to keep our children and staff safe. The School Safety Committee is continually looking at what else we can do to enhance security. That committee is made up of school personnel and first responders from both the city and the county. We are fortunate to partner with law enforcement and fire officials in these efforts. Their expertise is so valuable in the work we are doing. We will, of course, update you on any new initiatives or resources moving forward. Madam Chair, that concludes my announcements for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. This is an opportunity for board members to share committee reports. I think Ms. Taylor has an update.
Yes, I'll give a quick update since Ms. Young will be talking about this a little later. We attended our last Student Advisory Committee meeting of the year on May 22nd, and at that meeting, we spoke a little bit with the students about improving the physical and emotional safety of our schools, and they had some wonderful ideas that they shared with us. We also identified goal areas for the committee to focus on during the next school year. So again, Ms. Young will be talking about our full year later on, and SEAC is also here with their annual report, so I see them there. So that's exciting as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Do other board members have updates or comments? Moving on to item 5.1, this is an opportunity for citizens to provide comments. I will turn it over to Mr. Kelly, our parliamentarian, to talk about process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board, those citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected, hence citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore the board requests that all speakers refrain from making references to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please bear in mind that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, my instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Andrew Archbald.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to continue talking about teacher retention. Last minute, there's a lot of talk about unfunded mandates that education has to comply with. Let me remind you of one more mandate that is also unfunded but can generate so much savings that it is worth complying with. And the mandate is maintaining instructional staff year after year. Last fiscal year, the School Division lost about 12% of its instructional staff, about 100 staff members. That doesn't seem like a lot considering other places are dealing with a lot more. There are, however, a lot of consequences to such a high number. First, how many of those lost staff members were young people in their careers who we spent money on training, and then they went to another division? These young professionals could have had a long career here educating and supporting our students, like my doc. They chose something different, something they thought was better. Now we have to spend money to train new people to replace these people that we didn't get much out of a career. National trends tell us the cost to replace just one teacher ranges from $8,000 to $20,000 per. All of this money is spent on either recruitment/hiring, onboarding, training, or lost productivity because the new person cannot complete the processes, as well as the people they are replacing. If we could just cut that 12% of lost staff in half, we're saving enough money to actually pay the raises that you wanted to pay. Sadly, we're currently on track this year as well. So why are all these teachers leaving if this is a division of excellence? Does your central office or building administration care enough to even ask these people or to read the research? I've said time and time again, a big driver is working conditions. What is so bad about this place that is driving 12% of our staff to leave? And on top of that, why isn't the administration being held accountable to do something about this? The pool of qualified educators is getting smaller, and it's becoming a zero-sum game. We are not just competing with our neighbors anymore, because this is a national trend. And to really compete on a national level for this growing scarce commodity, we must start holding administration accountable for the working conditions they've created. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Hall.
Evening, I'm gonna try to keep together on this. On May 12th, a wonderful light was extinguished. My friend and mentor, Bill Bryant, left us. Bill, with his signature long ponytail and gentle spirit, Bill believed in his community and strove to make Williamsburg a better place. If you didn't know Bill, well, I'm sorry, he was a rare individual. He was a graduate of Woodrow Wilson High School of Portsmouth and the College of William and Mary. Bill was an educator, a journalist, a historian, author, a civic activist. During his life, he was a reporter and editor of the Virginia Gazette and Daily Press. He taught speech and debate at Walsingham Academy. This well-said quote was part of his obituary. He had the ability to connect with others and spark positive discussions on controversial topics. Bill believed in the people in peace, love, and understanding, and the infinite promise of the future. He firmly believed that it was his life's work to help bring about a better future for all of us. For him, the American Revolution was not a distant event in history, but an ongoing process, and not only a revolution in our thinking could achieve the potential for our democracy. Bill had the passion for education and civic responsibility, and he was a great conversationalist and listener. Some of the organizations he created and participated in over the years. Bill and I founded Citizens for Education. He was one of the long founding members of Altogether, Williamsburg, and he served on a committee of community leaders who evaluated our schools to heighten our future. Also, Williamsburg Peace Initiative, Citizens for Community Progress, Williamsburg Community Forum on Arms Control, Coalition for Quality Growth, and Williamsburg Committee on Correspondence. He was a prolific writer, authoring several volumes of poetry, Tomorrow Jerusalem, A History of Nat Turner, Southern Hampton Slave Insurrection of 1831, The 30th of May, A Poem of the Revolution, and Call Me Bee, an account of his experiences during conducting tours of Jamestown and Yorktown. Bill was well-known to visiting school students from around the world. He conducted thousands of tours at Jamestown and Yorktown. He loved doing that. He toiled at the greenhouse at Williamsburg Pottery and served as a lawn bowling pro at the Williamsburg Inn, organized and managed the Friday Luncheon Group for over thirty years in the community, a wide forum of candidates discussing regional issues in the historic triangle. He gave driving instructions to the nuns at the Little Sisters of Francis, and his list goes on. He leaves behind his wife of fifty-seven years and his family. The reason I share with you, Bill, is because he believed in public education and saw our youth as our community's most important investment. We are missing a dear person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Concludes our speaker comments. Moving on to proposed agenda item 6.1, the 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Code of Conduct is required by the Code of Virginia and is approved annually by the school board, and Ms. Bujoir is here to present an overview of changes in the student code of conduct this year. Thank you, Ms. Bujoir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. As I go through this presentation, you do have two handouts. One is of the actual PowerPoint, but you also have a draft copy of the student code of conduct that I'll be referring to by page number. As Dr. Heron said, each spring, the Department of Student Services brings for your review the proposed revisions to the student code of conduct. The recommendations being presented tonight are the work of the Code of Conduct Committee, which was led by Ms. Anita Swinton, our coordinator of student services, and included parents, teachers, counselors, and administrators representing all levels. As part of their work, the committee received input from the school level regarding suggested changes. First, there is a database sent out to the building administrators each spring where schools may put requests for consideration of revisions. A principal's memo asking for specific feedback on some committee recommendations prior to final revision decisions was also sent out for feedback. You will see the results of that input in the suggested revisions this evening. Also, the VDOE released their revised model guidelines for student code of conduct in January of 2019. It is an extensive document, and the primary change in the guidelines focuses on aligning the code of conduct to show tiered levels of response to behavior, such as our Level 1 and Level 2. It is worthy to note that our code of conduct has been formatted in that manner for the past five years. The other major change in the guidelines is the coding of infractions for state reporting. In future years, our reporting to the state will categorize infractions into one of five categories. Behaviors that impede academic progress such as cutting class and cheating, behaviors related to school operations such as not following directions, inappropriate use of electronics for vandalism, relationship behaviors such as bullying, cyberbullying, inappropriate language and disrespect, behaviors that present a safety concern such as bus violations, possession of alcohol or drugs, sexual harassment, theft, and possession of weapons, and behaviors that endanger self-or-others such as assault and battery under the influence or distribution of alcohol and drugs, fighting and threats. So they've categorized it in five different ways. I will be referencing the draft student code of conduct as we move through the revisions at this time. So to begin with, on page one of the draft student code of conduct, you will see that we have added the strategic plan goals. We've also, on page two, updated the welcome letter from Ms. Ombi and Dr. Heron. And on page three, you'll see that we've revised the table of conduct to conclude new pages and adjust existing page numbers. Throughout the document, you'll see that we've changed all references to 2019, 2020, and we've also made sure we have consistency so that it says student code of conduct throughout the book. We had some incon- We had some inconsistencies with that before, so we've changed that. So you'll see those changes in red throughout the book. We're really excited about an addition, which is our page on MTSS information. You'll find it on page 5. The committee worked very hard to craft this in such a way to explain the work that the school division has been doing in implementing MTSS. You'll see that it does give a graphic with the different tiers and an explanation and examples for each tier, as well as a general definition of what the tiers of intervention are about and how we focus on that work. Beginning on page 8, you'll see some adjustments to the consequences information. This does align with the new state recommendation. First of all, you'll see that the explanations the state provides in their guidelines has been added under each level. For Level 1, we've added some wording and changed some of the intervention descriptions to include Behavior/Contract/Progress Chart, a rewording of confiscation to say student items including, to clarify. We've added Conference with a Student and Peer Mediation to Level 1. And Level 2, you'll see that Saturday School is there. It's been moved from Level 1. In our current Code of Conduct, it's a Level 1 consequence, and in this new state guidelines, it's considered a Level 2 consequence, so we moved it to align with those. Also, on page 8, you see the addition of the definition for aggravating circumstances. If you recall, last year, the state code adjusted the length of suspension for grades K through 3 and the length of long-term suspension for grades 4 through 12. Aggravating circumstances, as defined by the state, provides the framework for when a longer suspension may be considered. Definition wasn't available at the time of printing for last year's Student Code of Conduct, so it's being added now. Also, you'll notice on the levels, and you'll see this as we go through the rules, the committee also recommended including pre-K in the disposition levels in order to address all students that we serve within our school division. Moving on to the rules revisions that are being recommended for this year, and we will start on page 12. You'll see that there are two altercation rules now. One is for fighting, and one is for verbal. The committee is recommending that we have two separate rules in order to clearly identify whether it's a physical or verbal interaction. There was a lot of discussion about just calling one fighting. We decided to keep it as altercation fighting and altercation verbal so that they are housed right next to each other within the Code of Conduct since we list the rules alphabetically. It's easier for parents to be able to locate those. You'll also see that we've added page references as appropriate, such as if you look under the bullying and cyberbullying rule, you'll see a reference to the chart on bullying. So if there's any connection to another portion of the Student Code of Conduct, we've added those references if they weren't already in there, and provided the page number. Beginning at the bottom of page 13 and the top of page 14, for the rule on electronic devices and inappropriate use, you'll see that we've added some wording that says "at all times and in a location as identified by the school," such as, but not limited to lockers and backpacks. This was added to provide clarification to the term stowed away. We had a school ask us to kind of clarify that, but we couldn't nail it down totally because not all of our schools K-12 have lockers. So we tried to further define it, but still give some input from the school to be able to identify that for their particular school. On page 15, under Threats, the committee suggests adding school transportation, bus stop area, school property to the location examples to further clarify where all the rules apply about threats. And on page 17, for withholding of evidence, the wording deemed significant to an infraction has been added to clarify the purpose of a staff request for confiscating an item, and therefore, if it's not turned over, being withheld. So that's when that rule would apply. These revisions that we've reviewed as far as the rules mirror what you will see in Policy JFC later tonight in the agenda. Policy JFC houses our rules, so the revisions we've just reviewed as far as rules are mirrored exactly in that policy revision. And finally, the last section of our Student Code of Conduct does hold policies that are relevant to the Student Code of Conduct, and there have been some changes there. First of all, on page 30, Policy JEA, School Attendance, has been updated because we revised that in November of 2018. Also, on pages 32 and 33, JFG Search and Seizure was recoded from JIHA and revised late last spring, so we've included those changes. And finally, Policy JIHA, Student Automobile Use, that was retired in November 2018, so it's deleted. You won't see that in there. The two policies that have been revised are presented entirely in red to show that the current policy has been included in its entirety. And that concludes all of the revisions for the Student Code of Conduct, if you have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Bujhwa.
Sure. I think it's good work, and I really appreciate that. Couple little quibbles on page 8. For Level 3, if you're adding pre-K, should you put pre-K through 3? And on page 13, Electronic Devices and Appropriate Uses. So the last sentence carries over to the next page. Students shall neither take nor display audio, video, graphics, or still images of a person. Instagram, Snapchat, do you think that's not happening? I guess we had to do it because they haven't signed a release, and so they're not supposed to do it on school property, but... Thank you. Anyway, I think that's a good document, and I appreciate the work that you and the staff have put in on this.
Additional comments or questions?
At the very beginning of your presentation, you were talking about the government reporting. Is that anywhere in this document?
It's not. We just wanted to be able to reference it because it's a change in how we'll report. So at the end of each year, based on our Student Code of Conduct, we have to report our discipline data, the Discipline, Crime, and Violence Report, and it's going to restructure how that information is presented. So if you think about the school quality profiles that the DOE puts up for every school, and it provides discipline data every year, it'll restructure how that's presented into those five categories.
And is that anywhere that someone can read?
It's in the guidelines. But it's, yeah, we chose not to put it into the Code of Conduct. We're waiting for additional guidance on that. They assign the rules to the categories. We have no say in that. So one thought for next year is to just identify the categories next to the rules. But that's new enough that we wanted to make you aware, but there's been no real guidance on how to include that, and it could potentially become... We try to balance all the time, providing as much information as possible and making it friendly because it's to be reviewed with students K-12. So we're trying to get input on how to lay that out.
Is that tweaking of the reporting, is that going to reflect in more maybe accurate, you know, the complaints that we've heard in the past with the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline, and reporting? Does that have any impact on those stats at all?
It might change how they categorize them. If you think about how they present those charts, especially on the school quality profiles, I don't know that it's going to change our requirements as far as what we're We haven't seen information yet to know how that might impact.
Comments? I just wanted to say, I was excited when I saw page 5 and the layout of MTSS. I just, it was very exciting to have that information laid out that way, so...
Thank you.
Moving on to Item 6.2, Federal Programs and Grants for 2019-2020.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, again, we bring to you our updated application for Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, Title 4. And Mr. Paul is going to introduce staff that are going to be making the presentations this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Tonight, we are here to present the proposed applications for federal programs Title 1, 2, 3, and 4 grants for the 2019-2020 school year. To review the purposes of each grant, Title 1 serves to provide personnel and resources that supplement academic programming in qualifying schools. Title 2 supports training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. Title 3 supports language instruction for students with limited English proficiency. And Title 4, which is also known as the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant, provides funds for programs and activities to improve students' academic achievement. Now I'm going to share information about allocation history for the federal programming grants. As you can see, over the past three years, Title 1 grant funds have remained fairly stable with steady increases across Title 2 and 3. Title 4 is in its second year, and as you can also see, we received significant increase last year. State funding is formula-based and includes several factors, such as enrollment and free and reduced lunch statistics. As with other federal grants, such as Carl V. Perkins, the grants are written with level funding, which uses the previous year's allocation as a basis for writing the grant. When the state releases the updated allocation amounts in the fall, we submit amendments to the grant to align them with the exact allocation amount. Now, I'd like to bring up Dr. Laura Estes, Coordinator of Title 1, who will present information regarding the 2019-2020 Title 1 Grant Application.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. In alignment with statewide educational reform efforts, Title 1 emphasizes funding for continuous and innovative programming that supplements the work on our school improvement goals. It further aims to help meet the needs of all students through effective instructional programs and continued teacher development. In this effort, WJCC prioritizes the use of funds for direct service to students overall. Grant-funded positions currently include a Title 1 Coordinator, a Data Analyst/Administrative Assistant, a Reading Recovery Teacher Leader, partially funded from grant funds, a Title 1 Instructional Coach, six Title 1 Reading Recovery and Literacy Group Teachers, one Reading Recovery Summer Position, and nearly 30 part-time tutors. Remaining grant funds supplement instructional resources, professional development, and family engagement or home-family resources for students. As you can see from this slide, service to our identified schools is consistent from previous years and does remain the same for next year. And lastly, the areas of focus remain consistent with the Title 1 goals presented on the first slide, through the sustained implementation of three main supplemental early literacy interventions. The interventions include leveled literacy systems, a small group model, reading recovery, a one-to-one model, and successful start, a kindergarten, small group classroom model. And all three methods emphasize direct teaching, ongoing progress monitoring, use of formative assessment, and consistent feedback for student growth that is built around high-quality, developmentally-leveled texts. And all three methods feature, yes, all three methods feature the use of ongoing professional development for teachers of Title 1 students, and emphasize a high level of parental and family engagement, and providing home literacy resources for eligible students. So I will turn it over to Dr. Rodinger, who will present information on Title 2.
Good evening. Title 2 funds support training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. Title 2 supports the implementation and support for schools using collaborative teacher teams. Collaborative teacher teams incorporates the following: a cycle that includes selecting a standard and setting a goal; identifying an instructional strategy; grade level or department teams that examine individual student work generated from common assessments; collaborative structure, scheduled meetings that focus on the effectiveness of teaching and learning; and along with evaluating student performance, final outcomes in the cycle prompt teachers to evaluate their learning and the strategy that served as a focus for the teaching team. Additionally, Title 2 funds address a portion of the salaries for our elementary literacy coordinator at 65%, secondary math coordinator at 50%, and science coordinator at 25%. To share information to our divisions' Title 3 and 4 application, here is Dr. Pat Tillman, Coordinator of ELLs and World Languages.
Good evening. It is our proposed plan to continue to utilize the Title 3 funds in a manner consistent with division initiatives and in alignment with the four pillars of our program to serve English learners: building programmatic capacity, building instructional capacity, building linguistic and academic capacity, and building family and community engagement capacity. To that end, our Elevation Platform is an integrated information and instructional learning management system specifically designed to meet the needs of educators serving Ls. Excuse me. Not only does its platform house all of our demographic assessment and programmatic information for our English learners, but it also provides general education classroom teachers with content-specific, language-focused instructional resources that can be used in the collaborative space for language instructors, content teachers, specialists, and administrators to review and exchange information and ideas to support the success of our English learners. The platform also supports sheltered instruction within the PSYOP model. The Imagine Learning Platform is a computer-based suite of individualized, adaptive instructional experiences designed to enrich the language acquisition experience of our Ls that also includes extensive offline intervention tools and materials to facilitate teacher-led, highly-targeted, small-group instruction that directly supports the computer-based learning. The Newcomers Academy will continue to emphasize the conceptual and fundamental language of literacy, numeracy, science, and social studies. Students will engage in highly scaffolded, language-rich activities that encourage the language expression across the four domains. Opportunities for daily small-group instruction, independent practice, and guided practice will anchor this model. We also intend to utilize funds to support our Language Instruction Summer Enrichment Program, as well as our L Parent Resource Center. Moving on. Title 4 funds are generally used for increasing technology and enhancing instruction for students through professional development opportunities for educators. The Virginia Department of Education offers the opportunity to transfer funds into other grant areas. Our team opted to transfer the Title 4 funds to Title 3 to increase technology and enhance instruction specifically for our growing population of English learners. We anticipate receiving the Title 4 funds for the coming year and intend to continue to use the allocation to support the expansion of our digital instructional resources and professional learning opportunities. Thank you for allowing us to share.
We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you very much. I just had a question about Title 4, because if memory serves, it sort of appeared, but you anticipate it will not disappear.
Correct.
Okay. For the foreseeable future?
The foreseeable future, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking at Title 2 Focus Areas, Title 3 Focus Areas, and I don't see, under 2, Social Studies, and under 3, I don't see Science and Social Studies. Are those... studies. Are those visibly incorporated, or where, why aren't they highlighted, like?
So as part of the collaborative teacher team program, the elementary teachers are being instructed in the CTT process. We're focusing right now on just using it with math and expanding it to ELA in the future, but we're hoping that in addition, science and social studies will be the future expansion of that.
Yeah, because the reason I bring that up, that's where civics and how to get along sort of things come up in social studies, and I hope that that receives significant attention as well. We have a full-time social studies coordinator now, and I'm seeing the science coordinator, point two-five, we can't use part of that social studies coordinator for that?
All of the coordinators participate in professional development, so I am sure that our social studies coordinator will be focusing on...
It's just not highlighted.
It's not just highlighted in here.
Can you just tell, for the public, can you just explain what CTT is?
Collaborative teacher teams.
Yeah, thank you. It's interesting, you know, the school system is funded in so many different ways, and here is, you know, four different grant fundings with sixty-page applications and all the associated paperwork and tracking to get that. And, you know, while you say the Title IV is increasing significantly from forty to ninety-one, fifty-thousand dollars on our one-hundred-and-thirty-five-million-dollar budget, doesn't seem all that significant, but it's money, and we'll take it, right? I do appreciate the presentation in this manner to kind of, to kind of show what's going on versus going over the applications because that doesn't really go into English really that well. And, you know, a couple more bullets on what specifically we're doing, I think would be helpful in the future. But this is definitely a market step improvement, so I appreciate the work that you guys have put into, into, I can almost understand where these monies are going now, so I appreciate.
Well, it's almost difficult for us to understand the grants, so making it easier for all of you to understand is definitely one of our objectives.
Right, and I don't know if the general public can appreciate how much work goes to fill out those applications and submit all that. It's just, it's mind-boggling when you get down to it.
Just have a question about, I'm looking at the funds that we received in 2016 to 2017. We're receiving less now than we received in 2016 to 17, and more than last year, but less than, you know, they're not awarding more money.
You're referring to Title I grant? I will bring Dr. Estes up to address that.
It's the dip in the initial implementation of every student act when this, and we haven't quite bounced back yet to the funds, the level of funds that we had prior to that implementation. We're kind of holding steady with the one-point-three, close to one-point-four.
And, but I guess the part of that follow-up is, have we had an increase in the number of students being served by Title I over that period?
We have very excitedly served many more students, even with the smaller amounts of funds that we have received because of the reshaping of our services. So, yes, we're doing an awful lot with what we have.
We're getting less money, but we have more students.
We're doing more.
Yes, yes, thank you for noting that.
Just want to check.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six-point-three, VHSL membership for 2019-2020. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another annual event, and Dr. Worley is going to talk about VHSL memberships for our schools, or in fact, Mr. Ottstadt, it looks like, he's going to come and talk about it.
Not playing tennis anytime soon, I guess.
I guess not.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Heron, and members of the school board. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the WJCC Athletic Department to request school board authorization for VHSL memberships for Jamestown, Lafayette, and War Hill High Schools for the 2019-2020 school year. Studies show that high school student athletes perform better academically than their peers, are less likely to participate in unhealthy or risky behaviors, and manage time more efficiently. Participation leads to strong leadership skills, positive social connections, and goal-setting. VHSL athletics and activities not only foster a strong sense of school spirit, but often create a strong sense of school community pride as well. Every year, each member school has to renew their membership. The membership fee is based on three things: number of sponsored activities at the school, a basic membership fee, and the league insurance premium. There is a thirty-five-dollar fee for each sponsored activity for a school from the previous year. We have marginal differences in WJCC schools in the number of sponsored activities. This difference is due to varying levels of student interest in our different school populations and that school's ability to field a full team or activity from this past year. The basic membership fee is the same for all schools in Virginia, a flat rate of eight-hundred dollars per school. The insurance assessment to members for the 2019-2020 school year is five dollars and fifty cents per student and is calculated by the number of students who participated in a sponsored activity in the 2018-2019 school year. These proceeds are used to pay the premiums on the insurance policies that the VHSL must maintain in order to conduct its programs and activities. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So for, in the number of years I have looked at these things, it would, it would help me if we could do a matrix of what, maybe not what's being provided, but what the differences are in these, in these, and maybe a little commentary as to why, just to, just to understand, because I know, like, for instance, Jamestown has girls golf and Lafayette doesn't, or there's something, there's something in there, and so I keep going through these three forms trying to figure out what the differences are, because they are all the same numbers, and I just, I just like to have some understanding of what those numbers are and why that is, just to, so, I think we can provide that.
Yeah.
I'll answer questions.
Thank you.
Ottstadt. Item six-point-four, VSBA delegate alternate. This is a placeholder. We will vote on that at the next meeting. Janelle and I will serve as your VSBA to vote at Congress. Are recommendations for something else?
I'll vote on that tonight.
I'm in.
As long as I'm not in, I'm good.
Any further discussion on that item? Moving on to item six-point-five, award a contract for request for proposal nineteen dash one-three-nine-two-seven middle and high school textbooks and approved textbook adoptions for FY nineteen and twenty.
That's a problem.
Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
Good evening again. Tonight, I'll provide you with an overview of the precalculus, oceanography, and both middle and high school health textbook adoption process, and provide a recommendation from each of the textbook adoption committees for acquisition of textbooks. Textbook adoption aligns with Goal One of the Strategic Plan, Academic Achievement, College and Career Readiness. Having textbooks and resource materials that align with the current standards ensures that students and teachers have instructional resources aligned with the Virginia Department of Education standards and WJCC curriculum. The Virginia Department of Education has lists of reviewed and approved textbooks for many core content areas, including Algebra I, which we adopted earlier this spring. Precalculus, Oceanography, and Middle and High School Health textbooks are not included in these lists. The Code of Virginia permits local school boards to use textbooks not approved by the Virginia School Board of Education, as long as a local textbook review process is conducted and the requirements of the Virginia Public Procurement Act are adhered to. It is for that reason that WJCC initiated the RFP process for the purchase of these textbooks. The textbook RFP committee was formed, and an RFP was for precalculus, oceanography, and health textbook was issued on May fifteenth, and after the mandatory thirty-day submission period, the RFP committee evaluated each vendor on three criteria: experience and qualifications, capabilities of the vendor to provide services, and finally, cost. Notices of award were sent to vendors, and we were then able to continue our local textbook adoption process. Each textbook vendor was contacted, and resources for each of the courses under adoption were sent to schools and central office. At that time, committee members were asked to review the materials along with their colleagues and submit feedback. A textbook adoption fair was held to enable community members to review the textbooks and also provide feedback. The final step of the process included a committee meeting on May twentieth to review feedback and finalize the selections. Committee members were selected per school board policy IIAA. I am appreciative of all the work of the committee members and their colleagues. In addition, I would especially like to thank Mr. Kelly, Ms. Young, and Ms. Cook for serving on the committees as school board representatives. Here we have the members of the precalculus textbook committee, the oceanography textbook committee, and two slides for the health textbook committee.
Slides.
After the initial adoption meeting, the committee reviewed the timeline for the textbook adoption, reviewed two different rubrics used to collect data, which we'll discuss in a further slide, and was provided with the textbook adoption fair information as well as follow-up meeting times, dates, and locations. All of these documents were provided to the committee digitally and physically. During this initial meeting, various committee members posed questions of interest to their areas of expertise for the coordinators to take back to the vendors. A review by the school board, here are two rubrics, and you have copies of those in your packet, used by the textbook adoption committee members. The first rubric is used by the teachers when evaluating the efficacy of the textbook and resource materials in the classroom setting. The second rubric was used during the textbook adoption fair to evaluate textbook and resource materials as presented by the vendors. The textbook adoption fair was held on May fifteenth at James Blair Middle School. The event was publicized on the school division website, Facebook page, and Twitter account. In addition, all curriculum leads distribute the information to their team members and students. At evening, each vendor delivered a presentation explaining the benefits of the textbooks, its alignment to the Virginia Standards of Learning, and additional resources that would support the instructional process in the classroom. Teachers had a deadline to submit their rubrics in preparation for the textbook adoption selection meeting. At the meeting, the committee members in attendance reviewed all classroom feedback and had the opportunity to add additional feedback regarding the instructional impact of the textbook and resource materials. At the conclusion of the meeting, each discipline selected a textbook for adoption. WJCC Department of Curriculum Instruction worked with the James City County Purchasing Department to secure competitive pricing proposals from the selected vendors, as identified by the committee. Each textbook and resource was selected to best meet the needs of WJCC schools. We have here the three final, four final selections: math, precalculus, third edition, science, oceanography, and invitation to marine science; for health, middle school, Virginia teen health, and high school, Glencoe Health. At this time, happy to address any questions you have. I have our science, math, and health and PE coordinators here, if you have any specific content questions.
Ms. Cook?
I don't have any questions. I just would like to, well, I guess, make a request. I realize this, I want to thank everyone who participated for the hard work. It's a tremendous amount of work, and I was really honored to observe the thought and preparation everyone put into coming to this decision, but it's been a really long time since we've purchased textbooks, and I would like us to, in the future, request them when we need them, and if it means that we have to pull them out because we haven't been given the funding. But I'd rather see us do that, like we try to do with buses, than to just not ask or wait. I know we sometimes use year-end funding, which is, or do budget transfers at the end of the year, which is also a smart strategy, but I was saddened to see how long it's been since we've purchased these textbooks, and I think our students deserve better.
My only question is, with so many resources online that we, that are provided for students, do we have a, are these textbooks actually being used in classrooms? I'm saying this as from being a teacher, given new books and having them sit there because we had already gone on to other things, but are they being used within the classroom itself?
We have classroom sets that we've purchased, and they're used to support the curriculum, but they are not the curriculum. So they are used, but I wouldn't say that they're page by page, day by day. So when we're writing the curriculum, we're using the resources that are given to us within each of the textbook series, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just to add on to that, so with each of those textbooks, come, is there an online component as well?
I believe so.
Yes, there was. For the precalculus text, the teachers selected a textbook to support the curriculum. It did not have an online component. However, we were able to secure samples, if you will, of applications of project-based learning-type problems for precalculus to segue into calculus, which is what they'd rather have rather than a digital resource for the students at that level, because they want to do more hands-on work with them in small groups.
For middle and high school health, we secured multiple e-copies of the health textbooks for students who may be ELLs or homebound. They can use those ebooks in different ways, in terms of translations, or use them at home. Also, the teacher editions are all ebooks, so they'll have access to all the digital resources when they plan their instruction.
So are the digital resources more than the book, or is it just the textbook in a digital form, or are there additional?
In the middle and high school health, yes, there are lots of videos and manipulative worksheets that they can use that go beyond what's actually in the textbook, yes.
Well, for the oceanography textbook, it's far beyond what's in the regular textbook, the online resources, including Skyping within the field scientists.
Yes, I just wondered, the titles don't mean a whole lot to me. I was just wondering, like, which publishers awarded the contracts?
It's in, it's in Board Docs.
Oh, they're back up.
For the precalculus textbook, the publisher is Wiley, but often if in hardcore, just, I guess, assume them, so that HMH will be for mathematics again.
Virginia Teen Health and Glencoe Health are both McGraw-Hill publisher.
Oceanography is Cengage, and it's a Division of National Geographic.
Thanks.
I want to see the train come back. Somebody ask some questions, we have the train.
They're not sitting down this time.
And I do want to officially thank Dr. Miani, and I will say that he was amazing doing dual work, but also Mr. Ottstadt and Mr. Neely for the amount of work that they did. Textbook adoption is a long process. It involves a lot of people, and the three of them did an amazing job, so I just wanted to publicly thank them.
I could just make a comment in relation to Ms. Cook's comment earlier. We feel exactly the same way, which is why within the last year, you're beginning to see a very decided move towards replenishing books that should have been replaced. And so you'll see more of this moving forward as we continue to give attention to our resources. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership on that.
And we're being very purposeful so that we're buying textbooks and resources after the VDOE makes all of the changes to the standards of learning. So we have the changes to the standards, we rewrite our curriculum, we do our common assessments, and then we go look for the resources so that they're appropriate to the new curriculum.
I would agree with Mrs. Cook that, you know, these textbooks have a life, and they should just be on a revolving, you know, and one day we won't have textbooks and all be electronic, but that day is not soon, so we should, but we should just keep programming that in, that we're going to have to ask that, and if we have to push it for budget reasons, we have to push it for budget reasons, but we should be the ones who make that decision and not curriculum leaders.
I just want to reinforce that notion that you develop and design, that our staff develops and designs curriculum, which has its own scope and sequence, and we use those textbooks as resources. The textbooks themselves are not the curriculum.
Correct.
I knew you were going to say that, but I, it is, it's important to know, because what that also, what that also, what that really means is, you have a lot of staff teachers, central office principals, spending... teachers, central office principals, spending a lot of time creating the curriculum.
We do, yes.
Which then drives the decisions about what resources you're going to use.
Correct.
And it, and you, and you modify it.
Correct.
On a regular basis, yeah.
Every year, we look at the end of the year at the curriculum, make decisions about what needs to be changed, get feedback from teachers, make changes to the common assessments that we have, so it's never a static, it's ongoing.
Exactly.
You know, revisions every year, and then every seven years, the VDOE changes the standards and we go through major curriculum.
Thanks.
Thank you again, Mr. Paula, and thanks again to the committees for all the work that they did on that. So moving on to item 6.6, award contracts for requests for proposal 19-13942, English Language Arts Curriculum Resources, Ms. Paula.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask Mr. Paula to stay, but she ran away, so, thank you, Mr. Paula, please.
Good evening again. Um, in 2017, the Virginia Department of Education adopted new standards of learning for K-12 English Language Arts. In response to this, teachers, reading specialists, and the coordinators of elementary literacy and secondary ELA spent many hours creating new curriculum frameworks, unit plans, and common assessments. This RFP was designed to identify resources that support the new WJCC curriculum. Members of the RFP committee included reading specialists, teachers, and central office staff who evaluated the proposals based on the following criteria. Vendor qualifications, understanding the statement of needs and ability to meet RFP requirements, functionality of print and/or digital resources, proposed work plan and cost. The RFP was written with the intent of award, awarding one contract that covered multiple vendors, giving us flexibility to order resources to support all learners. The cost budgeted is over 100,000 over the course of six-year contract. Questions?
I, I, it's more a comment, I guess. I, I was looking at the K-12, K-5 curriculum themes, and I looked at 612 curriculum themes, and what struck me was the K-5 were basically focused on, um, the nature of text, um, how to deal with it, um, you know, functional text, whatever. Then I go to 6312, see words like "healthy," "courage," "discipline," "tolerance." Do we have some of that identified, uh, for the K-5 people as well?
I believe that many of the resources that we're looking at weave those in, but the way that the curriculum is written from the VDOE is more function at that level, whereas it's thematic.
But they're not always totally, uh, correct about that.
Dr. Moore is very aware of that, but as we select texts, we will be...
No, but I think that's important, because I, I think, uh, you know, and, you know, people just assume that, you know, during, especially K through three, that your, the primary focus there is to learn how to read and write and calculate, you know, do math and, but it also is, well, those are other things as well, and maybe that, maybe a lot of those things get plugged into social studies, I don't know. I, I hear making another pitch for social studies, but, um, just in light of, you know, so many things that have happened and going on, I, I just, you can't start at too young an age dealing with some of those things, so, and maybe they do, it's like a lot of other things, it's just, it's just not highlighted, it's not, it's not out there.
And in addition, we're hoping to create lifelong readers and lovers of reading.
Absolutely.
And so that's a variety of different types of texts that we'll be looking at. Not every child is interested in fiction.
That's right.
So it's looking at nonfiction, technical, it really is, um, a much more broad curricula than ever before, and there's a lot more student choice, uh, which I believe will engage our readers a lot.
You do see my point?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Additional comments, Ms. Cook?
Just so I'm, this is a mechanical question, so it's coming to us because collectively these contracts hit the threshold above?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to be authorizing you to award a collection of contracts next two weeks? It's one contract, and it serves multiple different companies. So this will enable us to order, for example, let's see, if we order something from Heinemann for one particular grade level or one theme, and then maybe Pearson from another, but we can assess what the best resource for whatever grade level or theme that we're looking for. And so it's good for a number of years? Six years, yes. And as long as it's within budget, you don't have to come back to us? Correct, which is, we were trying to streamline this as much as possible, and we're going to be doing that again for math resources at the elementary level this summer. Excellent.
Additional comments, questions? Thank you, Ms. Paula.
I can sit.
Moving on to, um, information discussion items, 7.1, 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee Annual Reports.
Hello, Madam Chair, and the Board, and Superintendent. My, uh, my name is Dr. Charles Lazier, and I currently have the pleasure of serving as the Chair of your 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee. One of the goals, roles of the committee is to offer our professional perspective of business and tech trends, along with what we see as the vital skills and abilities that a student will need to be successful in the workplace following graduation. The student may go directly into a job or a certificate program, a two-year degree program, a four-year degree program, or the military, using the hands-on skills learned in the WJCC schools or our, um, CTE school. Committee members who represent local business and industries, community colleges, Workplace Investment Council, and the WJCC schools review the division CTE programs, curriculum, and make suggestions for ways to leverage learning opportunities for students within the local business community. This includes several types of work-based learning experience or career exploration opportunities. You've received an electronic copy of the advisory committee's 2018, 19 report. There is also a paper copy at your seat this, tonight, I believe? Your paper copy? Yes, I was told, yes. I hope that you enjoy learning about the many ways that the CTE program has expanded student learning opportunities to include a number of initiatives inside and outside the schools this year. There's quite a long list there of what our students have been doing, both locally, regionally, statewide, and, uh, nationally, including a program at NASA over at Jefferson Labs, which the school district did very well at. Additionally, I will note that the committee recommendations focus on expanding and building existing CTE resources and opportunities at both the middle, and yes, we do have career exploration lower than ninth grade, in fact, in the elementary school also, and in the grades nine to 12. If, after reading the report, you have any questions for, for the committee, Mrs. Young or Dr. Horley can share them with us, with the committee. They serve as the school board and staff liaison to the advisory committee. I want to thank, thank you for the opportunity to share the report with you and for your leadership as a board in supporting the growing importance of the CTE program in our schools. I think we need to recognize that not every student goes on to a four-year college education, and many of our students leave grade 12 looking for a job and looking for a career right away, and I, I want to thank the board for supporting what you do for the CTE program and for those students. I know we had two students on the board, and they came in and they suggested things, we talked to them, you know, what do you see in your schools? What more do you want to see in your schools? So they were very helpful and very forthcoming with, uh, with what they wanted. I know, Mrs. Young, you were there at the meetings, and we, the committee appreciates you being there, and you're a very good supporter of the CTE program. Is there anything you'd like to say about the CTE program?
Well, I mean, as I'm looking at the report, I mean, being there at the meetings, you don't recognize or realize how my, how involved our students are and our faculty is involved in all of the activities, but it's impressive, and I know everybody's going to read it, and I would thank, uh, Sony for going in my, on my behalf the last time, but our, our students are receiving an amazing education, have amazing opportunities, and, um, the chance to, to do, uh, different apprenticeships and, and internships, I think that's going to be more and more on board, but I love the NASA thing that they, the kids did, that was, they were so excited, and the, I guess, the best comment was from one of the young gentlemen, he said he had to learn how to sew to do that. I thought that was amazing, so...
And I want to thank the staff, too, the teachers in the schools, because they work very, very hard, and we saw, saw that at each meeting, you know, things would come up, the teachers did this, the teachers did this, the staff did this. It's very impressive. I was in education for 45 years, and, and, uh, it shows that, uh, WJCC schools are good. They're really good, and they're, they care about the students, and that's the bottom line, the kids. Thank you very much.
More comments or questions?
Questions, or, I hope not, but that's okay.
Come on, questions?
Um, no, I would, I would, I would, um, you know, the New Horizons piece, and, um, I was, Dr. Herr and I attended where several WJCC students, you know, had their signing day and, and accepted opportunities with, uh, various companies on the, on the peninsula, and I thought that was really, really, shows really well for our school division, and, uh, manufacturing day is always just a great, a great way to get out and see.
It's good to see the kids succeed, it's as simple as that. We want the kids to succeed, and they do. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but just one, one, another positive comment. I think, uh, I think the other thing is, um, the committee and, and our teaching staff have really helped to elevate the value of this, of this kind of a program, and I think part of, and part of what that does is, it attracts students who want to go into that program, which is really...
Keep students in our schools, too.
Absolutely, it's very, very, um, it's like, gosh, that's something I, I really want to find out about that, so I, I applaud you, the committee, um, and especially our, 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 our teaching staff that inspires those students.
Yes, they do, and the staff really does inspire some of those kids, Mrs. Young saw that. You know, the kids would come in and they were just excited, just excited with the hands-on activities that they were doing.
And, and to jump off from where Dr. Beers is going, exposing the teachers to that, to understand that, that trades is not what it used to be, I mean, at the shipyard, there's a lot of, of reading and math and, and communication skills that go into that, and making sure that those, that the teachers can appreciate that and can, and share that with the students, and, and also tell, understand to those students that there is a purpose to what you're learning and, and why you are learning.
And I think the businesses that were on the committee conveyed that, too. They, you know, this, it's more, they just can't, uh, know the minimum anymore to get ahead. You've got to know more, not only the degree, but you need to know more, and you need to be able to do it well.
Right, and I know that, I know the New Horizons program, um, is expanding in the number of businesses as, as, you know, because businesses, at the end of the day, they're looking for good employees, and then they are starting to understand that they get good employees from, from these programs, and so they're starting to become more engaged and, and, and it helps our students, but it also is, serves the interest of the business community as well.
Oh, yes, it does, it's very good, very good.
And do you have other committee members with you?
No, I don't think so.
On his own.
I have. It was a good program, and I, I appreciate your support.
Thank you much.
Thank you for your work.
Item 7.2, Student Advisory Committee Annual Report.
Doing it.
Hey, Ms. Young, thank you.
Okay, um, the Student Advisory Committee, um, serves to encourage student voice, share information, and make recommendations to the school board about the division and its governance. The committee is composed of the superintendent and/or designee, two school board members who are, um, Mrs. Taylor and myself, and 12 students, four from each of the respective high schools, Jamestown, Lafayette, and Warhol. And the Student Advisory Committee, they have four scheduled meetings a year. This year, they met in November, January, March, and in May. We just recently had one, and that's what Mrs. Taylor spoke about tonight, but it's, if, if there's any committee that is really, um, you, you get the vibe of where kids are today, it's that committee, because some of the things we talked about this year were college and career connections. Dr. Worley shared the VSA, VSBA handout profile of a Virginia graduate, which you might think may not be very interesting, but they, they brought forth so many things, they talked about receiving more help from teachers, uh, knowing what resources were available to receive additional help, uh, teachers needed to be proactive when they see a student needing additional help, and, uh, more opportunities to incorporate, uh, student leadership in, in classrooms. Uh, we also, that same night, talked about, another meeting, we talked about positive student and teacher collaboration and communication, um, and some of the things that make students want to learn from teachers and connect with, is that teachers connect with the class and they're caring, enthusiastic, approachable, active outside of school, uh, that they, they, um, participate in supporting clubs, that they're relaxed, prepared, and that they know their, um, that they know the curriculum and know how to teach, um, because one of the things that they did bring out is that some of the challenges that, um, that posit, that challenged positive teacher-student relationships are that teachers not knowing the material, uh, not interacting or engaging with students, and a lack of connection, lack of respect, and not making time, and I thought that, I mean, and I don't believe there's any teacher that doesn't strive that, but sometimes we need to just remember that. We talked about library usage, the positive things were technology, the environment, and resources, and, um, having been in the new Jamestown library, that was an amazing experience, I had reordered that. Um, and some of the challenges were access, uh, technology expertise, and space, and I know where I would be with that technology expertise, so I won't say anything. Uh, but then, um, Mrs. Parker came and talked about, uh, graduation requiring, requirements, and she explained the changes, uh, that align with the profile of, of a graduate. Uh, the committee did make some recommendations, uh, based on their work for the past year, for the, for the forthcoming school year, was they wanted, uh, would like to see an expanded, uh, options for experiences with job acquisition skills and advancement, customer service skills, resume writing, and conflict resolution, and critical thinking and problem-solving, and perhaps, uh, process development for access and use of space in the library. Uh, and the wonderful presentation we just had from Dr. Lazier about, uh, CTE, but they would like to see an increase in that, uh, with specialty courses, workshop classes, and finance classes, and develop a college readiness course focused on filling out applications, writing essays, and finding a college that fits the student's interest. Other, um, and then also using school days after the SOLs to learn about career opportunities, which sounded really like a great thing, uh, in different subjects like math science. Other things that they suggested for, uh, future topics, and I think they're very timely, uh, was mental health and student wellness, and we're certainly trying to address that as a board with our additional five counselors, um, availability of resources and core readiness. And one of the things I thought was really interesting when we were talking about availability of resources, it's not that we don't have the resources, but students are not aware of them. Great, they also would like to see, and it's not on here, but they did talk about, um, developing, um, school, individual school apps for, for, uh, handle on what opportunity the high schools. Yes, committee?
I know, I agree.
Fine.
Comments or questions for Ms.?
So, so when I, when I first proposed to having the Student Advisory Committee, there was some concern that the students would not be engaged in it, wouldn't, wouldn't be involved, wouldn't be interested, and that, and that there'd be some reticence participation because you got superintendent and school board members in there, but they'll let you know. There is, there is no problem with that, and I, I always enjoy going to the, to those, those committee meetings, because they, because they do give you that feedback, and it's, it's, to get, talk to people on the ground and, and our, our actual, our ultimate customers, which is the students.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kelly, for, for developing that, because I love that committee. I just, I, I love the energy and, um, focus, and, and these are our young people that we're preparing for the future, and just have them come in and, um, from freshmen on up, and they're, they're, they really want things to go well, and I, I, I just think they're amazing, so...
Ms. Young, additional comments or questions for Ms. Young? Okay, moving on to the next part, 7.3, Special Education Advisory Committee. The Chair, Ms. Culliver, is here, but so is a lot of C- The Chair, Ms. Culliffe, is here, but so is a lot of SEAC. So if SEAC members would like to stand up and we could do a quick introduction, I mean, leadership.
Hey, Dr. Herron, good, I'm Madam Chair and members of the board. I'd like to introduce you to the SEAC committee and I'd also like to introduce you to your leadership for next year. So we have new leadership incoming. Michael Willen is going to serve as Chair and Beth Hall will be the Vice Chair for tonight. And then we have Karen Newman, Chris Waskey and Diana Anderson here as well tonight. And some of our other members were out of town on business, so. Anyway, good evening. It has been my honor to serve as Chair for the Special Education Advisory Committee, or SEAC as it is known, for the 2018-2019 school year. Last June, I stood before you and explained that the SEAC would begin a multi-year process examining inclusive practices throughout the division. The SEAC was confident innovative and inclusive practices were occurring and our intention was to identify and highlight what practices and programs were already being successful within the current framework and how these great ideas could be replicated in other schools. Unfortunately, due to a variety of circumstances beyond the SEAC's control, the information collected in conjunction with T-TAC at William &amp; Mary was only presented to the SEAC on May 9th. Therefore, the SEAC did not have sufficient time to review and provide analysis of the data for inclusion in this year's report. However, it is the intention of the SEAC to include this data in our next report. Despite these challenges, the SEAC used a multifaceted approach to examine inclusive practices across the division this year and we have presented the board with the following recommendations. One, establish a division stance on inclusive practices. Two, establish a system to recognize models of successful inclusive practices. Create an inclusive strategic plan. Increase disability awareness recognition in WJCC schools. Increase and diversify disability representation in library materials. I'm not able to discuss each recommendation at length, but I would encourage the board to read the narrative section of this report where the SEAC explains the research, processes and information that was used as the basis for these recommendations. Inclusion is a complicated concept. It is, as it can be many things and have many components, as it is both a practice and a philosophy. Merely placing a child in a room with their peers does not mean that they are an active participant in their environment. Access does not equal inclusion. Effectively understanding the concept of inclusion requires a clear definition of what it means and then, and understanding the ways in which it can be applied differently. From the brief review of the focus group data collected this spring, from the division administrators, teachers and support staff, it is evident that WJCC schools lack a clear definition and formalized expectations with regard to inclusive practices. As such, the SEAC is recommending that the division establishes a division stance on inclusive practices as it pertains to students with disabilities. Taking a public stance facilitates the implementation of these expectations and establishes inclusive practices as a priority within the division. Other school divisions in the state have established these expectations and we would encourage WJCC schools to do the same. As part of our approach, the SEAC reviewed the strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, which states that it is intended to guide teaching and learning, administration and operations in WJCC schools through 2023. Despite the fact that WJCC students with disabilities continue to lag behind their division peers in academic outcomes, the strategic plan and the associated mid-year report demonstrates a lack of specific and focused outcomes to address the needs of students with disabilities. In reviewing the data collected by the consultation group, the SEAC found very little information with regard to special education. Keywords associated with students with disabilities in an education setting were only referenced 20 times over the course of focus group data. The strategic plan includes multiple strategies designed to improve classroom instruction for all in students and term equity is solely used in the context of ethnic and socioeconomic settings, but not in relation to students with disabilities. In fact, students with disabilities are not an identified subgroup to measure for each goal. As such, the SEAC strongly recommends the division revisit the strategic plan and work to explicitly address outcomes for students with disabilities. SEAC is excited about the unique opportunities for inclusive practice being developed in programs like the ones at Matthew Whaley and Laurel Lane Elementary Schools. These programs demonstrate how ingenuity and intention can transform a school. SEAC would like to see inclusive programs like these being replicated throughout the division. Looking ahead to next year, the SEAC will continue to review and analyze data collected this spring. The SEAC hopes the division's commitment to this process will broaden and work will be done to collect input from general education staff and parents so that a true picture of inclusive practice that is within the division may be ascertained. I would like to thank the WJCC school board and division for their commitment to education and well-being of all their students, particularly those with special needs. I would also like to thank Dr. Herron, Ms. Ombe, Ms. Taylor, Dr. Barrow and Ms. Bourgeois for their willingness to meet with SEAC leadership and their continued support of the Special Education Advisory Committee. Lastly, I would like to thank the members of the SEAC that are in attendance tonight for their commitment and dedication to the committee. The SEAC looks forwards to a continued relationship with the division and toward help making a meaningful impact on our special education population. Thank you.
Comments or questions, Ms. Taylor, if you?
I just wanted to thank you for your two years of service as Chair and for the public's information. The report that you presented to us, which is very meaty and detailed and I encourage everyone to read it, is federally mandated through law, the Individuals Disability Education Act. So you are required to report to us on ways that we can improve services to students with disabilities. And so I particularly like the summary section, those five bullet points, I think, and then with the associated narrative, I think are very helpful. And so I appreciate that and it, it caused me to, to go back and, and look at our mid-year progress report, Elevate, and I didn't see specific data for students with disabilities. And so I think this just helps remind us of where our focus needs to be. Out to us and again, we look forward to the incoming leadership and I'm particularly excited about the T-TAC data and so I'm waiting to see how that is gleaned and compiled and how we can use that data.
If I can just say one thing about that data, what was interesting about the data is that no matter, no matter what it says, what it demonstrated is the commitment that your teachers have to educating students. And that was what was exceptionally impressive across all platforms, across all discussions and across all interests. So to that, know that despite whatever, you know, whatever issues are brought to light, your staff is working hard to educate these children and that rang through in the data. So, thank you.
Much. Okay, moving on to the next action item is our Equity Series. So we will learn some more about inclusive practices that I believe SEAC referenced at Matthew Whaley and Laurel Lane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're pleased to bring you our Equity Through Engagement Series, All Inclusive Practices, and in particular, the two initiatives that were started at Matthew Whaley Elementary and Laurel Lane Elementary with grants from the Virginia Department of Education. And Dr. Barrow is going to introduce our presentation this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Herron, members of the school board. In October 2017, the Virginia Department of Education launched the Best Practice for Inclusive Education Initiative. The focus was to identify outstanding schools and/or educators who have developed programs that aim to ensure students with disabilities have access to inclusive education with their peers in the general education setting through a program called the Inclusive Practice Partnership Project. Matthew Whaley and Laurel Lane applied to be a part of the project and received a $2,500 grant from the Virginia Department of Education to use to support their inclusive practices. This evening, I am delighted to have representatives from both schools to share their individual journey with the Inclusive Practices Partnership Project, as well as highlight their distinctively different efforts underway to sustain inclusive practices in their schools. We will begin with Dr. Colorado, Assistant Principal of Matthew Whaley, followed by Ms. Swan, Principal of Laurel Lane.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Herron. My Principal, Mrs. Ford, several of our Inclusive Practices team members, Ms. Tamika Glover, Ms. Miranda Katsebus and Ms. Suzie McFatridge, and I are happy to be here tonight. At Matthew Whaley, we are extremely grateful for this VDOE grant of $2,500 to continue the work we had begun on inclusive practices. We used the money we received to refine our inclusive practices for special education and to try to include families and community members more in our work. We began our work by first inviting one teacher from each grade level to join our two special education teachers and me on what we dubbed our Inclusive Practices Team, or the IPT. We then created a community partnership with the Training and Technical Assistance Center, T-TAC, at the College of William &amp; Mary, thanks to one of the T-TAC staff members being a parent at our school. With her guidance, we bought each of our team members a book, Collaborative Teaming, to use as a resource for learning about inclusion and paid for substitutes for our team to attend a full day of inclusion training at the School of Education at William &amp; Mary. During this day, our team read and discussed information on what is inclusion, toured the Resource Center at the School of Education and explored models and resources for inclusion through activities, technology and discussion. We also used the money to pay for substitutes and gas so our team could make a site visit to a state model school for inclusive practices, Three Oaks Elementary School in Virginia Beach. The team there provided each of us with a binder full of resources, tours of various inclusion classrooms and resource rooms, a meeting with administrators to learn about crafting efficient IEPs and master schedules, and time for debriefing. This site visit really gave our team a strong experience in what inclusion looks like up close and personal. We used the last bit of money to pay for more substitutes so that our two special education teachers could work with our T-TAC liaison on master scheduling. She taught the ladies an efficient model to use to plan for meeting, IEP minutes through careful class placement of special education students. Lastly, we had enough money left to buy items for calming corners, social skills training materials and flexible seating for our inclusion classrooms. Mrs. Ford, our principal and I, put a few things in place for this current school year to support the work that we began after receiving the grant money last year. First, due to the scheduling work that our special education teachers did, we were able to place all of our inclusion students first when creating class placements for the master schedule. This helped us ensure that these students were placed with inclusion-trained teachers together in classes with other students who had similar needs in order to maximize push-in time by our special education teachers. Second, we held a year-long professional development strand on inclusive instructional practices. This PD strand was created for our Inclusive Practices Team to have a monthly forum to check in with each other on how our implementation of inclusion was working and to problem-solve together for things that we needed to tweak or wanted to try. Last, we instituted weekly collaborative planning between our general education teachers and our two special education teachers. Each inclusion teacher worked with the ladies to devise the collaboration in a way that would work for her. For example, two of the general education teachers wanted to meet on Fridays before school started. Three other teachers preferred to meet for 30 minutes during their regular planning time on Fridays and one team of two inclusion teachers wanted to meet through an emailed template with brief verbal follow-up before the end of the day on Fridays. This piece was the most powerful piece of work and support that we put into place. It gave built-in time each week for everyone to meet about student progress, upcoming lessons and activities that needed modifications or co-teaching ideas and assessments that needed accommodations. This year, among other services provided, our two special education teachers were able to consistently push into five different inclusion classrooms, grades three through five, to provide math, small group instruction or co-teaching for 19 students within these classrooms. 17 of those students were identified special education students, but two were not. They were at the same level of need as the special education students, so the special ed teachers included them in their groups too. 78.9% of these 19 students met or exceeded the special education teachers' math measures of academic progress SMART goals for the year. We were really excited about those preliminary academic results. Looking ahead, we plan to continue our inclusive practices work at Matthew Whaley and have the grand plan of expanding it to our entire staff. For next year, we have already identified and trained Cohort Two of our Inclusive Practices Team with six new members, one from each grade level. We will hold another scheduling day for our special education teachers and we will give all of our inclusion teachers and special education teachers time to review IEPs together in August when teachers return to work. We are instituting morning meeting as part of our master schedule across the board for all classrooms and this will help give all teachers dedicated time each day, not only to address school-wide social-emotional learning for MTSS, but also to address social skills training within the inclusion classrooms. We will also hold monthly check-ins for our Inclusive Practices Team. Lastly, we hope to begin working on including families more in our inclusive practices work. Mrs. Ford and I are so proud of the work our teachers have done on inclusive practices through the VDOE grant that started in the March of 2018. It has truly changed the hearts and minds of teachers and has changed the culture of Matthew Whaley in some ways. In the video on the next slide, our third-grade collaborative team will share their thoughts about how our work on inclusive practices has impacted them and their students. In addition, we've made a copy for each of you on a recent T-TAC article about inclusion in which Matthew Whaley staff members were a part of.
Our work on inclusive practices this year, common vocab, the collaborative teacher, I think that really, classroom, including students, to know where we're going and how we're going to get there.
The other thing that I've noticed with the inclusive practices is the community learners that we've established in here. We have, the teachers are coming in and out, most students don't even know who's serviced by who. I mean, they just welcome all of the help that they get and it's created a sense of kindness in the classroom. It's made me very proud to see. It's also taught a lot of empathy that I think is very important for students at this age to learn about how everybody is a different learner and there are so many different strategies that, I mean, all students can use.
Good evening. I want to thank the staff at Laurel Lane for the opportunity of being able to share the vision and the mission of being all in for all our kids. Amelie Smucker, who is here this evening, presented this information at SEAC in March and she brought the idea to us as well as the grant information and she has been a driving force in this initiative, which has been a very collaborative effort. This grant has offered us an opportunity to be able to impact the culture of our school and kids are benefiting. If all our kids are considered first, then we had these questions of, how do we empower the students with disabilities and how are we able to give them ownership over their learning? So, what we started to do, and I hope at this point you're maybe smiling or scratching your head, it all happened with a table. And so we, the team decided that they really wanted to think about what they could do in order to be together in terms of learning habits. And a space became a theme and it generated powerful discussion about what we do and the way that we do things. There wasn't enough room in the classroom and so we started to talk about an additional table. So picture it, Laurel Lane, 2017. This is a classroom, you walk in, very nice, lots of supplies, but there's just one single table. And while our special education teachers felt welcome coming into the classrooms, there was not enough space. When it came time for rotations and, and doing different stations and learning, our teachers were scrounging around, they were finding different places on the rug, on the carpet, in the actual station. So that was a little bit of an issue. And then, now you have the after and you can see, there's a teacher in the back with the picture, but there's also another teacher off to the side. So we had these two tables here in the learning situation of what's coming. And so our whole vision started to come to fruition of really being able to see collective, equitable practices happening, not just the special education students, but all students were benefiting because we now had the teachers in. So here are a couple of the observations that were taken based off of what's happened with the power of a table in the classroom. with the power of a table in the classroom. First, they're happy teachers. Our special education teachers no longer feel identified or labeled as that other person that's in the room. They feel like there's shared ownership in the teaching and the learning that's happening. Another piece is the actual collaboration. So with having the two teachers and the extra space, there's full conversation that can happen there between the two about lesson plans, which is making it absolutely powerful for the students. Also, there's an additional space for the kids to be able to learn, and that's just making it awesome. And then there's the station teaching that's taking place. So look at those happy faces. It's just an awesome opportunity for all of the kids to be able to come together, and those happy faces lead to flexible grouping. So again, we've had students who are being able to go to different locations, but there's this differentiation that is taking place and happening. And finally, what's really cool is the friendships that are happening. Kids no longer feel like there's a stigma or that they are being identified when there's time to, you know, let me pull this group of kids out. They don't want that. They love the chance that they are together, and they're sharing and being able to give those experiences to one another. So, I'll close by you hearing directly from members of our staff about these unintended outcomes that have come, but also the intended outcomes with the planning of this experience. Okay, sorry. You're so, okay, so let me move this way. All right, so, the power of one table became bigger than that. We had seven inclusive collaborative classrooms through this grant, and that was absolutely amazing, being able to watch that situation happen. But then, there was buzz that started to take place. The power of one table, one table, then started to change the environment. It started to change the culture, and special education practices were being watched by all of our staff members. So there were more tables that we started to purchase, and this has now given us 19 inclusive classrooms. And that's not just for our special education teachers, that's for our reading specialists, that's for our math specialists, our English as second language, there is push-in happening across the building. When our volunteers come in, they have a space that they can go to. It has been an amazing shift. And so now, you are going to get ready to hear from members of the amazing Laurel Lane staff.
Probably one of the biggest unintended outcomes was the relationships that were built with my students as I've, our collaborative lessons and more team lessons and activities for them, and I've noticed a huge difference just in the way that they interact with each other and treat each other.
Being able to work with a co-teacher is an amazing experience for the planning process. So it's not just me sitting down and trying to figure out, what am I doing with all these students? We can sit down together and collaborate, well, what's going to be best for the inclusive children, what's going to be best for the other children? And the best part about having a co-teacher in the classroom is that we're true partners in this process.
The unintended outcome from being awarded the tables has just been that I've really been seen as an equal, both by the teacher I'm collaborating with, with the students that I'm working with, with the parents I'm interacting with. I'm seen as a teacher within that classroom, and I think that's changed the culture of the classroom that we're in.
And that co-teaching is the key this year for my kids, be able to have a variety of different partners, and for me to have a variety of different partners. We get together every Thursday morning and plan for math, and that's such a difference than me getting a paper copy of lesson plans or an email Sunday night. I get a person to talk to, I get somebody to bounce ideas off of. It makes the world of difference for the quality of instruction for both of us.
I want to thank you all for the opportunity to share this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. Are we? Questions, comments?
So this whole push-in is a whole sea change, right, of, of how it's going to be across the board, do you think?
With special education and other services as well, you often see the pull-out piece that's taking place. With having that push-in, there's just the opportunity for different learning and experiences to take place. I think for a lot of our students, they're able to exchange ideas, and then when you have the different units and differentiation taking place, you see that there are different experts that rise through each opportunity, and that's been really neat.
So we can actually do tracking of the data, right? Some of it really seems anecdotal, like it's just common sense. It seems great. So we can follow this up with data?
I know one of the things that we're looking at, that we feel like is looking good so far, is some of the preliminary data that will be coming out with our SOL testing. So that's one piece. As we start to collect SMART goals from the teachers and looking at student reading levels, things of that nature, those are some of the evidence pieces, and we're seeing that. The students, they notice it. And I think, again, with teachers, they're able to speak to the power of being able to exchange ideas and even the lesson planning and sharing that collaboration with the collaborative teacher teams, all of those pieces. It's one extra piece of making sure that we're supporting those strategies and the mission.
And we should also say that there's always going to be a time and a place for pull-out. It's really going to depend on the students' needs and what they need. But push-in is, is really kind of, you know, a very good model, and it's worked very well for our Title I tutors, our ESL teacher also, our special ed teacher. So whenever we can, we try to push in, and it also does cut down on the transition time, which is something we had talked about in the Laurel Lane Project.
I did have, well, a comment. So I think anytime we can allow teachers time to plan and collaborate, that's phenomenal. That's so important to do, that allow teachers time to plan. But then I was curious, when the Matthew Whaley teachers met with the School of Ed folks and the TTAC folks, was there a conversation about defining inclusive practices and what that looks like? Was there a conversation in that PD?
Yeah, so we used that book Collaborative Teaming, which is all about inclusion, and so we did start with the basics. It's basically like Inclusion 101. So we really kind of explored that as our first cohort team, and second cohort as well explored that. So that is something we would gladly share with division.
Division-wide. And so did you find it was important to define that within your building at the outset?
Yes, we all want to operate from the same framework and the same lens. So yes, it was important to us to use this money to make sure we're starting at the ground level and building from there.
Both of these certainly seem like gems within the division.
Yes, what we're planning to do is, there's been a really structured teacher development with a specific resource in one school, and then a very much a common planning, common vocabulary, common everything in the other school, and we're hoping to have tables in both schools and the same resources in both schools, and have them become a model of practice and inclusion that we can bring other schools to see what's happening. And so I want to thank you for all of your incredible work with the grant, and Amelie as well, who's been a driver at Laurel Lane as well, and thank you very much as well.
That's so exciting. Thank you. Okay, moving on to policies.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing is here to talk about a couple of policies tonight out of the Finance Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The first agenda item this evening is to revise policy DM, Cash in School Buildings. This policy was originally adopted in 2006 and was last reviewed in 2010. The proposed revision would bring our policy in alignment with the associated VSBA policy. Our attorney has reviewed the policy revision, and it has gone through the Policy Committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions that...
Move it on? Next? Yep, next one. Eight point two.
The next one is to revise policy DN, Disposal of Surplus Items. This policy was originally adopted in 1982 and was last reviewed in 2006. The proposed revisions include the following: rewording of lines six and seven to include verbiage applying trade and allowances, removing a specific position title in lines 12 and 21 to say superintendent or superintendents designate, removal of lines 24 and 25, and adding the section symbol on line 28. Our attorney has reviewed the proposed revisions, and it has also gone through Policy Committee. Are there any questions?
You know, it's more, I'm just curious. How does the general public find out about the fact that we've got these used items that are for sale?
All of our items are, they go on a publicsurplus.com, I believe is the website that James City County, we have a shared service through purchasing where they take care of that for us.
We don't necessarily, we don't have anything specifically for our school division?
No, publicsurplus.com, if you were to go to it, you can pick a different, the different localities.
Yeah, but that would be, I think that would be, even just with the link up there, just to say, hey, you know, we always sell stuff, so, other places do, too.
What is the purpose of the first paragraph? I just don't understand what you mean. So, so we generate money, and we say that it'll be used for the cost of the new equipment. Why wouldn't we just put that money in the general fund and then pull that out for... I just don't understand why we need to have that paragraph there. Each six, line six and seven.
Line six and seven.
The first paragraph. So, I just don't see why that...
It is, so, the sale of items is a revenue line item, so that is where the money goes into.
Yeah, but then, but then we talked about it saying, why do we say that it would be used for the cost of the new equipment whenever possible? But why don't we just say that the money that goes in goes into the general fund, and if we want to buy something new, we'll take the money out of the general fund and do it? I just don't understand the purpose of that, because it's always been there? Is that why we put it there?
Oh, we modeled it off of the VSBA recommendation, but...
But, yeah, I take your point, because proceeds from that equipment, maybe you're not going to replace the equipment, but we could use some more books, or we could use some more, I don't know, whatever it might be, rather than, rather than actual equipment.
And having that, having that by policy being required to be, having it be an accounting practice seems to be cumbersome to me. I just don't know why we have the first paragraph.
Would you like it removed?
I would. I am one-seventh of those who have to decide though.
I would.
Two sevens.
Disgust us with the attorney?
We can certainly take it back, and if the whole board is...
Because it just sort of limits how, what you can do the money with.
You can sort of ask for more generic language that would allow, you know, ultimate flexibility?
I think what Mr. Kelly and Dr. Beers are suggesting is removing the entirety of the first paragraph, except if we're allowed to. I mean, it may be that it might be defined by, you know...
It's also just very interesting, it's an interesting way to start off the policy. Line 10 seems a better first line for the policy to me, but...
I just, I had supposed that it was there for some accounting purpose, and so, if it...
I can ask the attorney, because I'm not familiar with all of these different code sections, so I can certainly go back and...
And Ms. Ewing, would you please let the board know the other question that we had related to the inconsistency between what you're presenting to us and the VSBA, which seemed, that was also defined by code and seemed a little odd.
Yeah, so the VSBA policy had additional verbiage down in lines 27, 28, and 29, which I did not include. That verbiage states, "In addition, the school board may donate such obsolete educational technology, hardware, and software, and other obsolete personal property to a Virginia nonprofit organization, which is exempt from taxation under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code." It did not include that because the footnote states that this sentence applies only to elected school boards. Appointed boards should not adopt this revision, and since part of our board is adopted or appointed.
No, I'm glad that was eliminated.
I can thank your policy.
We're nonprofit.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, so explore removing that first paragraph, and then, I mean, I'm fine with if you, if you run it by the attorney, and the attorney's like, yeah, there's no reason for it to be there, I'm, I'm fine for striking it, and then we can vote on it the next, does that work for everyone?
It's fine.
It's for me.
Andy, Holly?
It's fine.
Okay, yep, I think we have consent.
Okay, so I will check with them.
Just keep it on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay. The next one, eight point three, the Vice Policy IGA-D, Career and Technical Education. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Mr. Paula's coming back up again.
Good evening, I believe for the last time. This evening, I'm bringing you forward one policy for your consideration. The changes to policy IGA-D, Career and Technical Education, are based on updates to VSBA policy and have been reviewed and approved by council. They were adopted in 1984 and revised again in 2001. The policy itself addresses programmatic requirements such as having a local CTE advisory council, while the accompanying regulation speaks to elements which may be subject to change as profile of a Virginia graduate evolves. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Policy Committee? Well, just, yeah, if you could, so a lot of the detail was moved over to the regulations, just, you said that, but I would like to repeat that.
Details that are more building-based rather than whole-program-based, and there are continual updates to profile for Virginia graduate, and so having to come back and rewrite the policy every time is a little bit less, more cumbersome than changing the regs.
We're just trying to get through the policies for the first time in a dozen years sometimes.
Just a minor question. Looking at that, the first sentence in that second paragraph, the draft, "A local career and technical education advisory committee will advise the board on the development and implementation of a local plan, church compliance with the policy with a capital P." What is that policy with...
I believe you're referring to, in compliance with the VDUOE policy.
That, I'm looking for the referent in there. Maybe, maybe, maybe that, the phrase that you just said should be, should precede that policy. I think I'll make it clear.
Like a small p instead of...
Oh, I don't care, I don't care, I'm just curious what it was.
I would.
And if, well, if you, if you capitalize those things that you said ahead, then sure you could capitalize the policy.
Because, what policy are you referring to? This policy or some other policy?
I was assuming it was this policy.
That's what I was, too, yeah, that's how I read it.
Say, this policy? Would that make it clear? If we said this policy with a small p? Yeah, that's how I read it. Does that make sense, Evan Jim?
I'm sorry.
Does that make, if we say this policy, and then make the policy small p, so to ensure compliance with this policy, because the policy is to, the school board will provide career and technical education programs that are incorporated into the kindergarten through 12th grade curricula.
And the CTE Advisory Committee is making recommendations based on that?
Okay, how about the school will develop or provides, has a policy that provides...
But a period after plan.
And strike to ensure compliance?
Yeah.
Policy.
Well, then move that policy word up to that first, yeah. In other words, we create a policy.
It is the policy.
It is, or there is a policy. The school board has a policy.
It's a policy, it's not self-referencing.
So, so put the dot after, the period after local plan and strike to ensure compliance with the policy.
And then the following sentence refers back to that plan.
Yeah.
VSBA says this policy, but, yeah. I, you're, I support what you're suggesting, but I just wanted to reference the VSBA.
It's weird to have policy, this, yeah.
Policy is capital P for some reason.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Paula.
Okay, moving on, thank you, Mr. Paula, eight point four, revised policy JFC, areas of offense and their definitions, Ms. Bujow.
Good afternoon, good evening, as, as we shared during the review for the student code of conduct, these revisions were previously reviewed at that time, we do bring this policy before you annually as part of our annual update with the student code of conduct.
Don't have, are you going to talk tomorrow? Because I'm looking at altercation fighting, altercation, and, but it says you remove two bystanders, why did we remove two bystanders, because sometimes bystanders are impacted by altercations that involve fighting.
So, if a bystander is, is injured in the course of some type of physical altercation, that would typically fall under assault and battery, since they're not participating.
Though, and, and can we combine or to individual property or school property, can't that say or to individual or school property, I'm not sure I.
Take out, take out the, the or.
Take out, or, take out the property, one of the first property.
To either property, comma, individual property, comma, or school property.
There you go.
My English degree tonight.
Did you repeat that, Mr. Kelly? I'm sorry.
So, any of these, so, any of these changes will convey also to the code of conduct, just to be clear?
Yes.
To individual or school property, is that what you, take out the first property?
We'll take out the first or, so, to either party, to individual property or school property, not sure what the first or is, or and or is just not. What are you sparking at over there?
Just strike the word or. Additional comments?
I don't know why it needs two properties, though.
I agree, I don't think it needs a second property.
I think it says or to individual.
Or school property.
To either party, individual or school property.
It's bad to have the individual property outlined, because I think of individual property being somebody's backpack or somebody's property versus school property, which is like, building, the, the grounds, the whatever, I think it's okay to have the two properties.
I agree with Ms. Hummel.
I don't care, you have to.
I have a quick question, didn't, is, didn't we used to have, I thought last year week, or maybe that was removed, had horseplay as a term?
Yes.
Quite a discussion about what the definition of that, has that been removed, or is that?
I think it was removed out last year, I think that's why we had the discussion.
No longer under age.
Was roughhousing or horseplay, was it, yeah?
Except it is included under bullying.
And that's, and that's not, that doesn't mean, what, and my, so, my feeling is, that's when you wrestling or fooling around with, with, but it's not the, there's no intent to hurt or harm somebody.
It's actually still under the, the rule for disruption, that we just made no changes to it.
So, is it still there, the language is still there?
It is, under disruption.
And under bullying too.
Oh, right, okay.
Additional feedback?
I prefer roughhousing.
All right, I think we're ready to move on to action items.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point one, personnel action, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of personnel actions as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, Ms. Searson?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Item nine point two, approved purchase request for strategic management enterprise information reporting system and supporting budget transfer is their motion.
Madam Chair, I approve, I move that we approve the purchase request for strategic management slash enterprise information reporting system, in the amount of $281,100 for the first year, $109,500 for years two through eight for licensing fees, and, comma, the supporting budget transfer.
I gleefully second.
Any discussion?
That almost brings a tear to my eye.
Hearing no discussion.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
I really wanted to make that motion.
Get the next one.
No, it's okay, no, yeah.
Item nine point three, award a contract to Mobilies Modular Space Inc. for a mobile educational classroom trailer for Matthew Whaley Elementary School, is there a motion?
I move that we award a contract to Mobilies Modular Space Incorporated for a mobile educational classroom trailer for Matthew Whaley Elementary in the amount of $50,886 and a monthly lease fee of $2,282.26.
Second.
Question? Hearing none, Ms. Searson?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Okay, moving on to board matters, board member comments, I'll start with Ms. Taylor.
Just want to wish best wishes to our students and staff as we enter the final weeks of school, it's the final countdown now, so, remember to take care of yourselves and engage in self-care, especially during exams.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Cook?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank all the members of the advisory committees, I didn't want to say like, thank you, thank you, but thank you, thank you, thank you, all at once, and then also, I think since our last meeting was when we had the ship try day, is that right, is that since the last meeting?
I believe so.
I had the privilege of going to Berkeley Middle School, and I was surprised at how excited the sixth graders were to try cabbage, and how much they wanted stickers, that, and so, they didn't put the stickers in the typical place, but it was still very, yeah, it was still, just a little more creative about that, but, very high energy about eating cabbage, so that was really exciting, had the privilege of watching Dr. Heron and Ms. Ombi put on the honor cords for the Thomas Nelson Early College, that was really great, so, delighted to see that growth in that program.
Did you guys graduate? Oh, you put them on other, oh.
Put them on.
She said that you put them on.
On other people, sorry.
On 117 students.
Grammar police over there today. Also, wanted to thank the PTA Council for hosting the Virginia Secretary of Education and inviting us, had the honor of, of sitting in on that meeting again with Dr. Heron and Ms. Ombi, and on Sunday, I got to watch Ms. Hummel hand out three scholarships that were offered by the WJCC Scholarship Fund, and there were a total of almost a hundred thousand, it was almost a hundred thousand dollars, so that's tremendous, and I just think the philanthropy in this community is amazing, whether it's directly to our students for scholarships, or through the schools' foundation to, to innovative projects in our schools that are really generated by teachers or through the ship program, we just have, we're lucky to have such innovation in our schools, and then, a few dollars from VDOE coming in for inclusion as well, so, I'm pleased that we take advantage of, of that and benefit from it, and then lastly, I just wanted to thank the VSBA and each of you for our wonderful retreat last week in Charlottesville, that was a good opportunity to spend some time with each other and continue our board development.
Ms. Young?
I was going to thank Dr. Leisure and Ms. Colorfer, and, and the, Ms. Bujow, Dr. Heron, and Ms. Whaley for our committees, but, I guess they've already been thanked, but for their, they do so much, and to have seen the many things that our students are involved in is amazing, I too was very impressed about the growth of the early college program, when I first went a couple of years ago, there was only, it was at War Hill High School, and I don't think there was, I don't think there was 16, I think there was maybe 16 to 18 students, yeah, that, that year, there was, and to see the growth, and, but to see them receive their cords, and that, that was amazing, and I'm, too, want to encourage teachers and staff and students to take care of themselves as we're winding down, so, and thank my colleagues for the retreat, it was lots of fun.
Thank you. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, a couple of things, I, first of all, want to once again congratulate all the students who are recognized this evening for their academic prowess and/or artistic performing drama and visual arts as well, I think it, it varies, it does, really speaks well about the variety of interests and, and talents that our students have, I also would like to congratulate those, the members of those high school teams who won or placed in the past, and also to wish the best to those who are trying to finish up in their competition as well, I look forward to graduation, I can't believe that graduation, it is graduation.
Two minutes.
One, yeah, yeah, and congratulate those who are congratulating, and wish them the best, no matter which path they decide to take when they head.
Dr. Beers, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I appreciate the security briefing tonight from our staff, and I also want to, those to keep in mind, folks who are either directly or indirectly affected by the happenings in Virginia Beach last week, and the tragedy that all that is, has been mentioned about end of the year activities, the girls and boys soccer team at Jamestown is moving on into the state's semis, which is at Roanoke College, coming this Friday, wish them luck there, and I believe Lafayette baseball is working on it tonight, so, so we're hoping that, that goes forward, next week is also the exceptional games, I believe, at Jamestown, so.
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Thursday.
It's Thursday.
The sixth.
What's going on?
The day before my birthday, so, we wish, wish that event to go off really without a hitch and, and give those kids and the staff and the volunteers a great experience as always, and graduation coming up, you know, be safe, be sound, make smart decisions, as I tell my kids, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to comment a little bit more on the early college program event that we went to, was it an average of 16 college credits that each, it was like an average of 16?
It was a combined 1,700 college credits.
Yeah, it was a lot. So, I just wanted to let, let that sink in a little bit, so, 1,700, what was it?
Collectively, 117 students earned 1,700 college credit hours.
I mean, that is incredible, that is such a huge savings for, for parents as they're moving into paying for a four-year degree, or taking out loans to pay for a four-year degree, that you could actually cut off your college, you could, depending on how you use your, your credits and everything, you could graduate a year early, or at least graduate a semester early, and that just translates into savings for everyone, so, I just wanted to hit home with that, that's really very impressive, also, the second thing, is last week, I visited DJ Montague with Ruth Larson from the James City County Board of Supervisors, and Barb Ramsey from the city of Williamsburg, it's always a good idea to show our funding sponsors our schools, so they can actually get in the schools and see all the wonderful things that we're doing, and I want to thank Kira for setting up the meeting, and I was more than happy to be the one that takes the credit for taking them around, and then, when we were there, I just thought I would mention that she pointed out two of the education grants that they had received from the WJCC Education Foundation, and one was drones, she marked, they, they use actual, they have a drone that they're teaching the kids how to program within the hallway of the school, so, I'm very curious about that, and then they also, she was explaining how they use their 3D printer as part of their MTSS, they actually teach the kids how to make the, the kind of prizes that they then give out in the drawings for, so, it was just really cool to see the innovative use of the 3D printer and how drone technology is making it into the elementary schools, then, I also wanted to say, yes, the Williamsburg Community Foundation gave out almost $100,000 in scholarships for our graduating seniors, but what is even more incredible is just being there in the audience and watching all of our talented students, hearing about their plans for the future, and it just makes you feel really, really great, our future is in good hands with our graduating seniors, and then tomorrow, I'm going to be really honored to speak at the GED graduation, and, and you're going to be there too, Dr. Heron will be there, so, that is also great to see that the young adults in our community are interested in continuing their education, getting their GED so they can move forward, that, that's it.
Yes, I regret that I won't be able to attend the GED ceremony, because there are lots of pathways for students, and so, I'm glad that we are able to celebrate all pathways that our students choose, I'll be attending an event at Lafayette, but did want to share that I had an opportunity to serve as Relay for Life, I was honorary chair, and so, all 16 of our schools had Relay for Life teams and raised money for Relay for Life, and so, our mascots were at the Relay for Life ceremony, I guess that was Friday, and so, it was great to see the dedication, and many of our staff and teachers were there, and many are survivors, and so, it was, it was great to see their families there in the community, supporting them, I was able to attend Lafayette's Art Night and got to look at some of the great art, I think Dr. Heron took some, on Twitter, was also able to attend Lafayette's annual band concert, and this Friday, we'll be attending Blair's Middle School Band Concert at King's Dominion all day long.
Good for you.
And that's so exciting.
Better you than me.
As I know, not all the middle schools have been able to perform at King's Dominion in recent years, and so, this is kind of a resurgence, and so, it's nice to see the middle schools get to go and perform at some of these local or regional competitions, so, I'm, I'm grateful that that's an opportunity for the Blair's, and I too wanted to thank all of the committee members who came and reported tonight, all of the committees are filled with staff who support community members, who are volunteering their time and their efforts and their talent, and so, we couldn't do what we do without their time and commitment, so, and just, again, congratulations to all of our seniors who are winding down officially, and having recognition nights, senior cord nights, and is truly harrowing. Right around the corner, so, looking at upcoming events, Ms. Hummel spoke about the GED ceremony tomorrow night at 6:00 at Jamestown High School, the policy committee meets on June 11th here in the annex at 8:00 a.m., the graduation ceremony is all day long at Women Mary on Saturday, the 15th, an upcoming meeting's closed session on June 18th, beginning at 5:00 at Stryker, followed by a work session at 6:30, and county chambers closed session on July 9th, beginning at 5:00, in room 309 here in the annex, followed by a work session. So, the next item or agenda items for the upcoming meeting, we're going to have an information update on instructional technology, an update on the strategic plan, lunch price increase, and then also consumables bid. So, unless there's further comments, this meeting is adjourned.